Okay, I am going to call the order. The April 17th meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everyone for being here. This is the meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 9. As a reminder, we've implemented a sign up system, which requires those who would like to speak to sign up on a public comment card, which is over at the table near where you came in. The cards will be collected at the beginning of the superintendent's report. And now I would like to introduce the principal of Meadowbrook, Mrs. Dawn Harrima for the welcome.
We are excited about Meadowbrook and all of the amazing programs we have at Meadowbrook, but tonight we're highlighting one in particular, our cognitively impaired program, which pulls students from all over the district for K through 4. And this program has a significant positive impact on our building in so many ways. And I'm not the best person to tell you about that. So we have a lot of special guests here tonight. Both of our teachers, we have a teacher Barbara Slider. She teaches our students primarily kindergarten through second grade. You can raise your hand. And Megan Davis, who teaches primarily third and fourth. Sometimes we split the second graders depending on need and caseload. And then we have some superstar students who are going to be with us today. Leo Reddick, Leo, can you just raise your hand? That's perfect. We have Elise Karas. And then Callie and Reed DeWitt, they're twins. And we also have Madison Ogilvy. We have another student who is maybe listed in your agenda, and he's ill tonight, so we couldn't have Tommy Dodge with us tonight. So we are going to spend a little time sharing some of the wonderful things that happen at Meadowbrook through our LINKS program and our Unified Champion School. And Mrs. Slider is going to come up and give you a little bit more information about what that looks like. And then we have a little slideshow presentation for you. And then our kids are going to tell you a little bit about how this has actually impacted them. So it should be a great time.
Good evening. First of all, let me say that it's going to be really hard to speak in under 10 minutes because I feel so passionately about the programs that we have here at Meadowbrook, but I'll do my best. Unified Champion Schools is an education and sports-based program. It's run by Special Olympics. It promotes inclusion, kindness, friendships, and so many wonderful things. And everyone at Meadowbrook has a chance to be involved in this program, which is also great. This program has been in existence by, let's see, almost 10 years. So 2014 is when we started. There's been many highlights to this program. One is we had some special visitors come and play bocce ball with us our very first year. Superintendent Bean was one. Our former lieutenant governor, Brian Kelly, came, and so did several other board members. That was really impactful to us. We also are featured in the Special Olympics Handbook, which is really cool. And then this past year, we got this great banner because we are now a national unified champion school. This is something that's awarded to very, very few schools in the whole United States. So that was a huge honor for us. As you can see on the slideshow, there are three components to Unified Champion School. One is a unified sport. We play bocce ball. We love playing bocce ball, don't we guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we play bocce ball together, and we are paired with other friends, and we compete, and yet we have fun together. The second thing is a whole school engagement activity. And for that, we've done so many different things. We've done a luminary walk. We have Inclusion Week. We do Rock Your Socks. We do service learning with Kids Food Basket. And that again is another wonderful time where kids work with kids for a common goal. Our third area is Inclusive Youth Leadership Team. And that is a group of kids who get together and help decide how we're going to make this more inclusive school, how we can be kind to all people and welcoming to all people. Ms. Harrima talked about the LINKS program. LINKS stands for Learned, Loving, Interested, Nurturing, Kind Student. That is something that goes hand in hand with the Unified Champion School. It is something that lots of kids want to be involved in. And I can tell you right now, from doing it almost 10 years, we usually have well over 100 kids involved in this program. It's really a fun program and a meaningful program for lots of kids and parents and staff. So that's really cool, too. LINKS happens in a lot of different areas. We do it in the classrooms, on the playground, in the cafeteria, assemblies, field trips, lots of different places. So now to the best part. We're going to watch a slideshow. And in this slideshow, you're going to see lots of different things. You're going to see some of our themes that we've had over the years. You're going to see kids, you're going to see them playing bocce ball together. You're going to see the fun that they have together. And you're going to see how they work together to just include all people and say that all people are welcome and that we are stronger together, like the back of my shirt. So we're going to run that, and then we're going to talk to some kids.
I think just looking at that video, you can see why this creates such a huge value for our school. We hear from the staff, the leadership in buildings like Northern Trails, where our students go, where we, they've learned how to work with children who are really different than them, have different skills, and bring different challenges and different strengths to the table in a way that the opportunity is here to create, and it creates that true friendship in over the course of their experience in K-4. Rather than just being a helper, these kids actually become friends. So today, Leo, one of our good friends, is going to interview some of his third and fourth grade friends.
Okay, ready buddy? Ready, move it this way. Can you guys see him okay? Yeah, right. Ready?
All right. What is your favorite part about being a LINK?
My favorite part of being a LINK is playing bocce ball and hanging out with my friends.
What does it mean to be a LINK?
It means to help others and support, um, people that need extra help.
What's your, what's your favorite part about being a LINK?
Um, my favorite part about being a LINK is probably hanging out with my friends about, um, at recess and just like brightens my day to see them be happy.
What is your favorite memory of being a LINK?
Uh, one of my favorite memories about being a LINK is meeting my friend Maggie. She is one of my best friends that I have made friends with this year, and I play with her like one of the two recesses every day.
She's my, she's my friend, too.
Thank you, good night.
All right, I think we have one more thing to do. I have a parent here who, her name is Jane Weatherford, and her son was a LINK for, I think, about five years. He is now a ninth grader, and she has a couple words she wants to share.
Like Barbara, I could talk all night, but I won't. My son is in the power wheelchair and the white sweatshirt back there. And as Barbara indicated, he has been in the Northern District since kindergarten. So he was here K through 4. He's been at Northern the entire time. And I have to say that I think LINKS, that inclusivity is real because all kids recognize him, they speak with him, they talk to him, they ask him questions, they involve him. That started here. So these kids who just came up and spoke, it is truly, I think, just the entire atmosphere that we all feel. And because of that, it is actually adults who are more apprehensive with our son than any kiddo in this entire community. So it's a lesson for all of us to take forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we wrap up, we have a lot of our LINK friends who were really excited to be here and see their friends share our story with you. So if you are a LINK in the room, could you guys please stand up?
I'll stand up.
Yeah, you should stand up.
We just want to thank the board for giving us time to highlight this special part of Meadowbrook. And I'm guessing some of our friends will leave and maybe make some room for those of you standing in the back.
All right, I want to just say thank you so much for that presentation. It was amazing. I loved to see all of the kids smiling and just looking so joyful through every single picture up there. And I noticed in one of the pictures, um, there was a billboard that said, uh, like, "Spread kindness like confetti." I was like, oh, that just is, that's obviously what's going on here at Meadowbrook. And I'm just so thrilled to see all of the wonderful things happening. So thank you very much for sharing it.
All right, yeah, so if we have LINK friends and families that would like to duck out now, please feel free to take a minute and go ahead.
You'll go home now.
Yeah, if there's anybody standing that would like to grab a seat now, please feel free, there are some that have freed up. All right, well, now we have to move on to the rest of the boring part of the meeting because nothing's going to top that. So I guess first thing, we need a motion to consider the consent grouping. Do I have a motion?
I am moving approve consent grouping, items 5A through C.
Second?
I'll second that.
All right, terrific. Is there any item that a board member would like to pull out for special consideration? All right, any, any items that you would like to draw particular attention to?
I would just like to highlight in the consent grouping tonight, the board is being asked to ratify the third series of the issuance of our bonds that were approved by the voters in 2018. We've issued Series 1 and 2 back in 2019 and 2021. This third series is the final part of that community approval back from 2018. And this helps to complete our renovations of our buildings and sites across the district. And great news on this bond sale that, again, with the board's approval tonight, we will close this sale. We beat the interest rate target that we had set for these bonds, and that's great news for everyone in our community. That means we can lower the cost of all of this work that we're doing. And also, we had quite a bit of participation from the financial market that really was oversubscribed in terms of the desire to have our municipal bonds as an investment asset for members of the investment community that spanned the country really in that. So that's a great thing. We don't often have sales of bonds on our agenda, but I wanted to point that out and point out the great news from this sale as well. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Since we have a lot of stuff on here for curriculum, we're going to switch things up, and we're going to go to Mrs. Tryon first for an update from the curriculum committee.
All right, so this month, we heard from our MMC leadership team on the progress they are making on streamlining all of our media center operational guidelines and also creating an MMC handbook. A reminder, I just wanted to remind this table and our community as well that any of the tiers of access that the MMCs are working to standardize for the next school year are also tiers of access that are currently available to parents. If they should choose that, they can contact their respective schools, and then the MMCs can add a note to that student's folate account. But, but yeah, starting at the beginning of next year, this process will be more standardized for all students. So to review, there are, there are five tiers of access that a student has in a media center. One would be standard access, that would just be the default. Two would be expanded access. And this is where a parent can opt for their child to have access to books in the next level up of a media center. So you might find this, you can find it at any of our schools, like a middle school to a high school. But especially in a school like Eastern, where the middle school and the high school are in the same building, a parent can grant permission for their student to check out books, not only in the middle school section, but also the high school section. So that's another tier of access. They can opt for limited access, which could limit the content that they are able to check out and also the format of what they're able to check out. One of the examples that was given at our curriculum meeting, I think, was a parent would, could say, no more, like, CD books. I think that was what they said, because my kid loses them constantly, and they're really expensive to replace. So I would like my child to never be able to check those out because they cannot handle that. So that was, that's one of the examples of a limited access, in addition to content, too, of course. Another tier would be that a parent could opt that their student has no access to check books out, but they are definitely still able to go to the media center with their class when they go at their allotted time during the week. And then also, the fifth tier would be a family visit after school hours to check out books together if parents would prefer to do that with their student. So those five tiers, again, currently an option if a parent wants to contact their school, but more standardized and formal for next school year. They are also working to standardize their collection development and reading process that will be in their handbook. And that would include items like who is responsible for the acquisition of books, what is the purpose of the selection that they are debating or that they are considering. So they would answer questions like what curricular goals or emotional needs does the selection meet? And what is the educational significance of the material when they are looking to acquire more books for their collection? Additionally, included in this new handbook will be specific and standardized routine for reading materials. So that could be anything from an informal reading on the fly, like a book is severely damaged and it is beyond repair. Also, the age of the book, is it still accurate? What is the circulation data on this book? Has it been checked out in five years or under? And if not, maybe it's time for that one to go. MMCs also went through a folate training that showed them all of the ways that folate system can generate data for them on works in a collection, age of the material, circulation data for the material. Do we have the same amount of books per student at one school compared to another? So that that is, there are equitable options for all of our kids. Also, exciting, the media centers were the recipients of two foundation grants this year, and this will extend to all of the media centers, not just one specific one. So the first foundation grant they received was $8,800 for updated nonfiction animal books. And I feel like those books get used and abused because so many different grade levels at the elementary level do some sort of animal report. So new nonfiction animal books. And then also, they received a grant of $9,000 for a book repair machine in the elementary and 5, 6 buildings. As you can imagine, those books come back damaged quite a bit. Stuff spilled on them, pages stuck together, bindings torn. So they now each have their own book repair machine in those elementary and 5, 6 buildings. They were very excited about that. So that was our instructional highlight at our curriculum meeting last week. And then I did just want to review that we are being asked to do a 30-day review, so we will vote on that next month, on a phonics resource for K-2 at Ada Vista. And then also, a new textbook for AP Physics at Central and Eastern called The Fundamentals of Physics. So those two will be under 30-day review. And then not for review, but I do think it's important to note that most of our K-2 classrooms in the district have opted to take part in the early adoption of the new and updated reading units of study that incorporates a much more robust phonics instruction for science of reading. So that was encouraging to see so many classrooms want to jump on that and get started on that as early as possible. And so that was our, that was our report from last week.
All right, terrific, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Tryon?
With the new, sorry, I'm too short. With the new, the five-step process that they were talking about for the MMCs.
The tiers, yeah.
Is there in the system where there, like, parents are going to be able to opt out certain books? Is there something in the system that's showing where the different genres or like if a book, mature content or not mature, you know, like for, you know, like the different age groups, is that in the system as well, too? So when parents go on that online?
So the, the third tier was that limited access. And then the parents would have the option to limit for content or format. So that would be where that would happen.
Right, but does the system, who suggested what the content or the format is in the system? Does that make sense? Like, if you have a book that is, is like mature content only, who's rating the book? Or is there an algorithm in the system already in place for the books that are coming in? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. I don't know that I can answer that question. If I'm the right person to answer that question specifically for you?
Okay, I was just curious because if parents are going through the system to say if they're going to choose not to certain kind of books and stuff, will that, you know, I mean, like, how, how are you going to decide which ones you're not going to if the, you know, I mean, if it's not in the, if the folate system does that?
Yep, so that I would, I would imagine is still part of, they're still fine tuning this process and making the technology piece of it more foolproof than it is right now. And so I would imagine that that's all part of what they'll be finishing up as we end out the school year and then before we start the school year in the fall. Cool, thanks.
Any other questions for Mrs. Tryon?
Mrs. Tryon, can I ask you just to clarify? There's a handful of updated textbooks, things coming to us as well.
Yeah, so.
From your end?
So, yeah, so we are going to vote tonight in our consent grouping since our 30-day window is up for the curricular materials that we reviewed at last month's meeting that we talked about in March. And there, there are a lot of them, more than is typical. So I can just remind you, what is up for approval is DBQ Project, approval of high school social studies, world history, United States history for the Spanish immersion programs, and then also approval of high school French, French 1 and French 2. Additionally, high school social studies, world history interactive, the modern era, US history interactive, reconstruction to the present, American government interactive, and then econ principles in action. Also, approval of Read Naturally and Number Worlds, which are two Resource Room materials. So this is a lot of curriculum. And I do just want to remind everyone that after a curriculum meeting, all of this is online under Board Book, and you can download all of the attachments that detail the breakdown of all of these proposals and what each piece of these curricular tools cost, and even how many we are purchasing. How many hard copy textbooks are we looking to purchase? How many online subscriptions are we looking to purchase? How many teacher's guides? How much professional development is offered for teachers via like a webinar to, to learn how to use these materials? So this has been up for 30 days for anyone that wants to look at that, to look at that. So just like last month, the ones that I mentioned today, the, the AP Physics and the K-2 Phonics for Ada Vista, those will be up again through our main meeting for anyone to look at. Does that answer your question? Okay.
And I just want to comment, so for everybody who's not a curriculum expert like me, I was just very impressed by the process that is undertaken to find these new textbooks and these new resources and how long it takes. It's more than a year, almost 18 months. And they get teacher input, and they get student testing input. And so I'm impressed with the process and impressed with these resources.
Yeah, I think, too, it's worth noting that a lot of teachers give up a significant amount of personal time. And we're And work time, too, which for a teacher is a lot of work because it requires subplans and a day out of your classroom, which is no teacher's favorite thing to do, to review this stuff multiple times throughout the process. They put a lot of work into figuring out which materials are going to meet our standards of rigor? Do they prepare students well for AP exams? Are they easy to use for both the teacher and the student? And so I feel like it is an incredibly thorough process, and they really do their due diligence to put quality materials in front of our students. So I, yeah, that's an important thing to mention when we talk about spending this much money. And a lot of this stuff has not been updated for, some of it, almost 20 years. So it is time.
Hey, Maggie, really quick, can you just, the DBQ, can you just, so the acronym, give the full thing, just, I mean, just for.
Yeah, I'm going to have to.
For viewers in the room, so sorry.
That's a document-based question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a, I was going to look it up for you, but you beat me to it.
Yeah, they use those a lot in AP classes to get them ready for the AP exams. All right. Anything else for Mrs. Tryon?
I'm pretty good with my educational acronyms, though. I do fall through sometimes.
That's the one I happen to know.
You're fine, you're fine.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we will move on to Dr. Mashad for finance.
Certainly. Well, we, Assistant Superintendent Davis gave us another bond update, and we got to look at some blueprints for some of the construction about to happen this summer at Ada Vista and Pine Ridge. Some very exciting renovations and reimagining spaces, expansion of classroom sizes over there, at Ada Vista in particular. And a lot of cool layouts for things that teachers and students alike are going to benefit from a lot. So we got a good walkthrough to start our finance meeting this month. In terms of things coming to us for approval, I'll put some numbers to the books because they're coming from different places and they have different kind of tags associated with them. So for the K-2 reading units of study books from Heinemann, those will be coming out of our SRR2 and SRR3 equalization funds for a cost not to exceed $56,000. The new social studies textbooks and online licenses that were last updated, as was said, about 14 years ago, are coming for a cost not to exceed $284,800 out of our general fund. The French instructional textbooks and a six-year online license from Vista High Learning is coming at a cost of $38,984 out of the general fund. That also comes with two hours of professional learning included, which is nice. The Number Worlds texts and online subscriptions, as mentioned, are for a cost not to exceed $32,910. Again, being spent out of our SRR3 equalization funds. And those also include some virtual professional learning as well for the teachers in those areas. For non-curriculum spending, we have a new fire alarm system that is needed at Northern Hills Middle School. The current system is nearing 30 years old and tends to go off on its own after hours and alert the fire department and everyone else. So that is in need of updating. We received two bids for that, and the recommendation is for the low bidder Hoekstra Electric for a cost not to exceed $228,000. And that work will take place, start to finish, this summer when students are not there. We have another request for furniture. We did the chairs last month to give a little more lead time. But for Ada Vista, Collins, Thornapple, and Central Middle, all of these places that are receiving the renovations, we have new furniture coming as well. So we've enlisted multiple purchasing cooperatives, purchasing from many different companies, all said for a cost not to exceed $985,000. That will come from the 2021 Capital Projects Fund. We have a food service addition as well, a new dishwasher and three-compartment sink coming to the production kitchen. We've hit our kind of ceiling in fund balance in there as well and need to spend that down. So this will reduce water consumption, increase productivity and consistency in the production kitchen. So that will come from Stafford Smith at a cost not to exceed $70,945 out of the food service fund. Additionally, we are being recommended to renew our relationship with Manor Custerison to provide our auditing services for our financial statements for the 2223 fiscal year at a cost not to exceed $53,000 from our general fund. Their pricing is competitive to others. They have a lot of experience with our schools and schools our size. And we've had a relationship with them for a number of years. So that is recommended to us to maintain them for another year. And the final item is property tax reimbursements. We have $13,949.28 to Kent County and $21.88 to Ada Township. And that rounds out our spending for the month.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Dr. Mashad? All right, then, Madam Secretary, could we please have a roll call vote?
Yes. Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Saimayer?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
No.
Ms. Thunk?
Yes.
Ms. Covell?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And we will head on to the superintendent report now.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fosson. I'd like to begin first by thanking Metal Brook. Thanks for hosting us here tonight, Dawn. Thanks to Barb and Megan and all of our students and families here as part of the Unified Champion School, really the entire school staff and community here and our LINKS program. What a wonderful presentation tonight. So it's great to have everyone who's part of that program. And as our parent mentioned, that is work that continues to pay dividends as kids grow older all the way through our system, and it's so great to see. This is assessment season right now. It's not always our students' favorite time. The state of Michigan requires that we go through assessments in our M-Step program and then the PSAT and the SAT. Some of these assessments have already been completed and some are still ongoing. We appreciate all of our staff members that help our kids get ready for these assessments all throughout the year. And the results will come to us later this summer as we move through all of that. And we also have our own internal assessment program with the MAP test with NWEA. And those are tests that we can complete in a much shorter period of time. So we appreciate that as well. I would just also like to say a word of thanks to everyone who's reached out since I've taken a step I've never taken before, and that's announcing my retirement later this summer. I'll have more to say about that at a later point in time. But certainly appreciate all of the support. And it's also track season. I know it doesn't look that way outside, but the metaphor in track is apt here. And that's always to run through the tape at full speed. And that's what I intend to do as we continue to move forward and help with the transition and search process in any way that I can. So thanks to everyone who has reached out to me during this time. I appreciate that very much. And we'll continue to stay focused on the needs of all of our students and staff going forward. And this also is the time of year of celebration, where we begin celebrating all sorts of student milestones and student growth in so many different ways. We saw a little, a little bit of that tonight. And that continues all throughout the next eight weeks. It's hard to believe we're down to the final eight weeks of the school year. But some fantastic celebrations of student growth and learning taking place all during this time. And I certainly commend a variety of events and activities to not only members of our board, but our whole community during this time. And that concludes my report tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Up next, we have an update on our superintendent search. We actually just, you know, we finished up a training. MASB came in and provided training for how to conduct a superintendent search. It's actually rather involved, as I'm sure everyone would expect. It's one of the most, probably the most important thing a board does, is to conduct a new search for a new superintendent. And one of the things that came out of the discussion upstairs that we want to try to discuss here a little bit is the next step moving forward, which is issuing an RFP. We can either do a full-blown RFP that goes out to everybody. We can do a targeted RFP that we send out just directly to a couple of different firms that we think would be able to help us in our search. Or we can just ask for proposals. So, and I know people have some different thoughts on that. So if people would like to share and then maybe we can come to a consensus on how we would like to move forward.
Well, as we talked about, the idea that's cool about an RFP is we can identify specifically what we're looking for in bidders. Unfortunately, it's a very lengthy process to put that out there and wait for all the bids to come in. So the idea of just putting a proposal out there is that you're going to get whatever they want to give you. This is how we do a firm, this is how, or how we do a search, this is how we do a search, and you might not be able to do a really thorough apples-to-apples comparison. So this idea of a targeted search, sounds like it might be beneficial because we already are aware of at least eight different firms that are actively involved in this business and could just simply write to them and say, "Please send in a proposal. Here's what we're looking for." So I guess to me, that seems like that might serve us well with our kind of tightened timeframe.
Right, yeah. And I mean, I think a targeted RFP does give us the benefit of, sort of the, of both worlds. We're putting something out there and asking them to respond to it rather than just seeing what we get with, if we went with a proposal. And it'll still allows us to say, "But we would really like to make sure that you address at least these items." So even though we're not going out to everyone, we're still comparing apples to apples.
I agree. Going with a targeted to firms that we know look for superintendents or have looked for superintendents, have experience in that, I think is important.
I'd either targeted, as you mentioned, the best of both worlds. I mean, one option, we're trying to move quickly because, of course, we would love to have this position filled. But the truth is, we don't want to skimp on our quality here. And above all, it's very important to us, the community is able to have the time to weigh in on this one. It's, we definitely want everybody's voices on this. So moving quickly, just because we'd love to be able to fill that, is not our intention here. And we're not going to skimp on, skimp on trying to rush it either.
Yeah, I agree with everything so far. This is the perfect example, probably, of this whole process for us, which is in anxiousness to find somebody and, but, but not do that hastily and not skip things in the process and not be as exhaustive as this, you know, requires and demands. So the targeted does make sense. We did receive some good information. And there are some groups in the state of Michigan, MASB being one, and others, who search for dozens and dozens and dozens of superintendents every calendar year. You know, so they know a lot of people in this state and a lot of administrators and leaders and all of this, and, and outside our state as well. So I think the targeted approach does make sense. I think we have a, we have a good idea of people we would ask, you know, who are very good at helping districts to do this. And it's the right mix in my mind of doing it quickly and efficiently, but not trimming and not, not missing opportunity elsewhere. So I think that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, in addition to that, I mean, Kristin, you made an excellent point of, we don't want to rush this. This was all, you know, Mary said this upstairs as well. I think we all agree that while we would love to have somebody come in as, you know, and hit the ground running in July, July or August, or whenever it happens to be, that's a very, very tight timeframe right now in which to try to find a permanent, a new superintendent. And I think doing the RFP also then, by doing it targeted, it helps speed up the process, but it also allows us to maybe move a little bit slower if we decide we would like to investigate having an interim superintendent. So that way, we don't feel like we have to be rushed through the process and we have somebody that could come in and lead the district through all of the day-to-day operations while, at the same time, on a parallel track, we are looking for the best candidate that we can that allows the community to have as much input as possible so that we have the time to find the right person, not just who can we find that can come in on a certain day. So I, it sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement here. So I guess I'll ask, do we have a motion to put forward a targeted RFP?
Yeah, I'd motion that we create and execute a targeted, and that President Fosson perhaps spearheads the effort to, to create a targeted RFP and get that out to interested parties.
And then, I think we heard that would take a number of weeks to get those proposals back then. So we have some time in this process where it doesn't feel like a lot of action is happening and we have to kind of wait for things to come back, correct, while we're, while we're waiting for those proposals? I just, I just want to make that clear because I want to make sure that the community, I would want to know that as a community member, that things are happening even when things don't look like they're happening.
Yeah. That was the distinction that was made for us upstairs, was that in theory, if we just wanted to ask one place to, to send us their bill to help us do this and be their firm, that they could have a proposal to us in a day or two, that it's not a hard thing to create. That a full RFP, by contrast, would be a four, or five, or six-week process to let that be out there for the right amount of time and receive, you know, proposals from anywhere and anyone. And this targeted thing seemed to be more in the middle, more in a couple of weeks' worth of time to hear from these, these parties.
So we're able to carry this process out with fidelity and not just try and make it work with a timeline?
Right.
Second.
Sorry, sorry.
No, good to make sure everybody has on the same board. Okay, so we have a motion to do a targeted RFP. We have a second. Shall we, is there any further discussion that we need to have on that? Nope.
I guess just one thing, since you acknowledged the interim, we were going to possibly think of a parallel process. We're already looking around to make sure there might be people that could fill in when Dan leaves us. So those will be parallel processes, as I understand, to make sure we're covered regardless of how this process plays out, right?
Exactly, yeah. Because we, until we start getting proposals in, we don't know what we're going to be looking at, what kind of a candidate pool we have. So I think it would be in the best interest of the district to have somebody lined up as an interim without knowing where this process is going to take us at what particular time.
And that, and that process will obviously look very different than hiring a full-time superintendent.
Very.
Yes.
Because traditionally, that's somebody that's probably a retired superintendent and may not be in here five days a week doing the traditional stuff. It can take many forms. It can be various degrees of involvement. That's something that's discussed with the board and that interim, and it's much more informal. It's not that whole interview process that's coming to meet the board and see how you work together and what the expectations are and what are the time expectations and all that kind of stuff. So.
So glad you said that, Mary. I think that somebody listening in would be interested probably in what would be an interim superintendent, what would be looked for. So obviously, ideally, somebody with lots of experience who's willing to put in a short-time stint here to keep things flowing.
Right. And one thing that I didn't know until very recently is that there is, like, being an interim superintendent is people's job. They actually, you know, retired superintendents go, "Yep, I'm willing to be sort of a professional interim." And they can go from district to district to district, filling in. I had no idea that that existed, but there is actually a whole pool of people.
We're already aware of some.
That are, yes, and they're, they are out there and willing to do that job, which is fantastic. Because this, the superintendent search is so important and it can take, you know, anywhere from, if you're lucky, a couple of months to, you know, six or nine months. It really just depends and you don't know what you're going to get. So it's nice that there is a pool of qualified people that can step in.
And the traditional time to start this is January. And we can totally work with it, but we want to make sure we get somebody to fill some really big shoes. So we will go with it, knowing that we have many options, and make sure we get that right person, whether it's in six weeks or 60 weeks, you know?
Sixty weeks.
Sixteen.
All right, but shall we, are we, if there's any more discussion, or we can move on to taking a vote? I think this one, we could just do a voice vote. All right, all in favor of doing a targeted RFP, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will do that. One other thing that we brought up briefly upstairs, and I will mention, and we can discuss this here again as well, is the, if we would like to create an advisory subcommittee for the superintendent search specifically. Because there is so much administrative work that goes on behind this. You know, making sure, like, reading the RFP and taking a look at all of that and making sure that it gets out and filtering through and checking to make sure whatever comes back in meets the requirements, maybe going back out to them and saying, "Hey, you didn't dress..." All of that stuff that would be really difficult to do if we all had to get all seven of us together in a room again every single time something came up. It might be worthwhile to have a subcommittee of people from the board that can handle that administrative work.
And this committee would operate just like any other committee?
Correct.
Just like curriculum, just like finance?
But that we'd all see every application and we would all be involved in the process?
Correct. Because a sub, a committee is necessarily less than a quorum. And so everything would be coming back to the full board for all discussions and decision-making. The committee would not make any decisions. The committee would not make any decisions on its own.
But they would get materials organized, they would make it presentable, so that we didn't have to spend time, like, sifting through and sorting through.
Exactly, yeah.
Kind of like curriculum and finance, come with recommendations or share information, so the full board can vote together to, you know, support or oppose it.
Right, and everything would be provided ahead of time, so it wouldn't be like
On the spot.
Yeah, it wouldn't be on the spot, it wouldn't be like, oh, we're, you know, we got four proposals, these three we thought were good, and you've not seen them. That, no. Everything would come through, it would just be a subcommittee to take care of all of that day-to-day little things that come up in the interaction with M A S B or M L I or whoever it is we end up using, to make sure that everything's in order, and it makes it easier for the full board to know what's in front of them and to make decisions moving forward.
Are you saying this committee is more of like gathering information for, to present to us, so we're not doing like a slated thing of like, this is who we would recommend? Like, the three people wouldn't be saying, this is who we recommend to the seven of us? They would just be presenting what comes forward to us?
Right, I think it's different than the finances and curriculum in that respect, right? Because no, it's not decisions being made, it's not saying, we're going to eliminate these 10 candidates, and so here's five for us all. I think everyone will still see all of the information, it's just the collecting and organizing and logistics behind it, which I would agree also makes sense to do as a smaller group, just for scheduling's sake, if nothing else. And to that point, I, I don't have massive spring and summer plans where I'm out of, you know, the commission or the state or anything for long periods of time. I'm happy to volunteer to do that if, if we need, call for volunteers, so I'm happy to do that.
And I think we all know that I will not be working in the summer as a teacher, so I suppose I would volunteer to do that as well. Just putting my name out there. Teachers do work in the summer, though.
Okay, to clarify for everyone, yes, there will be work, but I can be flexible about when it happens. Okay, so then I suppose we can look for a motion to form a subcommittee, or a committee, I guess an advisory committee we'll call it?
Yeah, I'd motion that we create a three-member subcommittee to help with logistics for the superintendent search.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll go ahead and do another voice vote on this one. All in favor of creating an advisory committee for the superintendent search, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are good to go on that one then. Terrific, thank you very, everybody. We will now move on to board communications.
Well, I, I want to talk about, we all got invited to Northern and got to see this really great Shark Tank episode of really fun businesses that were presented by the students. And Maggie and I got to go, and it was really interesting to see what they were coming up with, with recyclable materials and things that were not harmful to our planet, and, I really enjoyed the one guy who wanted to handle finances for everybody, and that was his pitch. And so it was just really interesting to see young entrepreneur minds kind of coming together, and, and the three teachers that were in there, just, just this kind of cool process that they have. And I got invited over next door to see the soap that was being made by students and the stamp, they come up the logo, and they were working on packaging next. And so being in a business, you know, kind of seeing the start to finish, you know, kind of in the, in-between struggling period, it was really fun, and to give us some notes to them, kind of encouragement, and, you know, maybe some direction. So it was, I mean, I loved it. I don't know, I remember who else got to go, but it was really incredible.
It was really incredible, and I think for them to present to a group of adults that they do not know, and a lot of them actually had created their product, and they weren't just simple products. I mean, someone created a cutting board made out of all those individually, you know, glued-together pieces, and a beanbag chair. I mean, it was, it was very cool. And I think it was just neat to see them put together a presentation and be so proud of their work. And they were good at answering their questions, too, that they were asked. I think you went before us, so, yeah, it was great. It was wonderful.
Yeah, just a little clarification, if we wanted to put a name on that, that's an example of 21st century learning and, you know, following. In that case, they're not necessarily designing the inquiry themselves, the teachers are guiding in that, but what's wonderful about that is that they adjust, they go through the process, they make mistakes, they resolve their own problems, that's the process there. It's, it's beautiful, right?
All right, let's take a step back to our superintendent search. We need to form this subcommittee, and we have it in our policy that we need to authorize Dr. Fosson to form that committee, to put some thought into it and designate who she would, we would like to serve in that committee. So I'm going to move that we give her the authority, delegate her to select that committee. Need a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we can do, any further discussion on that? All right, I appreciate that. I will talk with each of you and try to take in some feedback and try to form a committee that will be able to meet and work effectively and move this process forward. So thank you for that. We'll make a motion, or a voice vote for this one, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for that clarification on the policy.
The only bit of board communication I have from the foundation perspective, the grant cycle ended, and those were passed out in the last month to a lot of smiling teachers and classrooms, and very exciting to see that money, you know, go directly to students. And the major bit of news for this month is, is the official welcome to a new executive director to the Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation. Emma Rodell is, I believe, here with us tonight, and she'll be making, she's standing up in the back right there, and she'll have multiple public introductions yet in the future. Emma comes to us out of a wide range of candidates with a lot of skill and with a lot of background, and so very excited to have Emma continue the progress and the path of the foundation, as well as take it to the next level, to benefit all of our buildings and staff and students. So a welcome to Emma, and you'll see her as well at the State of the District luncheon coming up just in a couple of weeks here. And beyond that, that's, those are kind of the new spring highlights from the foundation.
All right, any other board communications? All right, we will then move over into our public comments. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come to the microphone and state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up regarding their comments. And we will first have Christine Yarid.
Hello, my name is Christine Yarid. I live in the district, I have my daughter graduated here, and I'm here to speak about the books. I want to raise one point, there's many points, but we have limited time, I do, so I want to raise one particular point. And Superintendent Beam, I, I want to start with an assumption that what you did in terms of being, you know, misleading people, false statements about what you did with the books, that that's not who you are, and that that's not the way you've lived your life and carried out your position. And, and I assume that, I don't know any different, when I was a parent here, I, you know, I have no other evidence that, that you're not anything, that a person that holds integrity. The concern I have for students is you're a superintendent of one of the largest, most powerful districts in the state. And the issue of LGBTQ books, of having them in the library for students, that sole issue disrupted your way of being so much that you did this, that you did something probably out of character. You've indicated you regret it. So if a person like you, that you're so, and I don't know your exact emotions, but certainly distraught and overwhelmed by this topic, I'm asking that all of you consider what it means to be an LGBTQ child and teen. And if this is so hard, and to hear all this controversy and to be in this environment, that it's so hard for a professional adult experienced, you know, living in this, in this community for decades, having the support of people, then, then I want all of you to try to consider what it must be like for a kid, a teen, and they're dealing with this, and they're hearing about it, and we have internet, and they read things and social media. And so my question for all of you is, what are you doing for them? They're victims of, that there's all this disruption in the community, it's about them, it's about who they are, and it's about their existence, that books, that having books about their existence is a problem, their relationships is a problem for a library, that's about them. And so I'm asking you and challenging you to, what can you do for those kids? What lessons are there, and how do you communicate those lessons? How do you let them know that adults are, you know, and I guess in this case, I'm talking about one specific adult, made a huge mistake, and, and it hurt people, and then what are you going to do to help them move through that? And I thank you for your, for your work and for your time.
Thank you. All right, next we have Don Foss, but you have attached a series of questions, so I didn't know if, Don, you wanted to come up and speak as well?
Hello, my name is Don Foss, I live at 7374 Gration Drive. I attended the March 20 school board meeting, and during the comment time, some people who spoke referenced two controversial books, Looking for Alaska and Push. I understand these books are available in one of the district's high school media centers. Excerpts from both books read or commented on were rather shocking. I wondered if students who accessed these books for an assignment were told beforehand they could write a review on, of any book of their choosing? Or were these books available on, on open shelving to any curious student who heard about them? Which raises a question, how did these books get into a particular media center? I, along with many other people in the district, need a better understanding of media centers in district schools, how they are funded and operated. This ranks up there with finding out in March meeting why some textbooks used in district schools are being replaced. Now here are the questions I would like answered, and I added them to my comment sheet. How much of the district's annual budget in terms of dollars is dedicated to funding operation and resources for media centers? Number two, do people who work in the media centers along with school staff and faculty decide how these funds will be spent? Number three, are people who work in media centers along with faculty, school staff, and parents of students free to recommend for purchase any book, including the controversial books cited earlier? Number four, are media personnel allowed to accept donated books, including controversial books, for their particular media center? Number five, does the district face a possible lawsuit or pushback from parents of students if there is an unwillingness to include controversial books in media centers? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Jared Jakobowski.
Jared Jakobowski, Grand Rapids Township, here's another history lecture. In 1923, the Frankfurt School of Marxist intellectuals immigrated from Europe to America. In the '30s, at Columbia University, under the fellowship of John Dewey, they promulgated critical theory, foundational to critical race theory. Dewey, America's public schools founding father, proclaimed totalitarian government schools in communist Russia to be ideal, because propaganda is education. By the '70s, Erbert Marcuse, a Marxist author of critical theory, was a raging influence in liberal university, as I can personally attest by my required readings of Marcuse and other America-hating intellectuals of the early '70s. Does the name Marco Freire ring a bell, a school bell? In the 1980s, Freire picked up the anti-American torch and thrust it flaming into our school system. Freire was hardcore Marxist intellectual who immigrated from Brazil and imported, wait for it, critical pedagogy, the seed from which critical race theory and social emotional learning were directly spawned. For decades now, Freire has been one of the most often cited intellectuals in colleges cranking out educational degrees. Freire was obsessed with literacy, overtly political literacy. Teachers especially from K through 12 had a moral obligation to teach sociopolitical values to groom and graduate children into political activism. Reading, writing, and math would flow as a natural side effect. George Orwell observed, "Some ideas are so idiotic, so crazy, that only an intellectual could possibly believe them." Newsflash, we are living Orwell's nightmare, and Pink Floyd's album, The Wall, nailed it. All in all, our kids are just bricks in your wall. We have a wall of teachers and counselors who encourage gender dysphoria and nutzoid, furry identification, a wall separating kids from their parents, from faith and traditional values, and obstructing love of country by deriding the American flag while imposing rainbow flags. A wall resegregating the races by convincing students of color their oppressed victims. Walling off science by wokester teachers saying, girls are boys and boys are girls if they want to be, and of course, men can have babies. And brick by brick, diminishing academic honors achievements in pursuit of equity. Please, before it's too late, Board and Mr. Beam tear down this wall that you have unwittingly helped delusional, devious Marxists construct over the last century.
Thank you.
That's what it feels like to have extra time. Peace.
All right, Stephanie Boone?
My name is Stephanie Boone, and I'm very loud. Okay. I live at 2205 Null Point Drive. On this day, April 17, in 1790, Benjamin Franklin died at the age of 84. He was one of our founding fathers who had a significant and profound influence in the early development of this great nation. Aside from being a prodigious inventor and esteemed writer, Franklin founded the Library Company of Philadelphia in 1731, in America's birthplace, which is an independent research library concentrating on American society and culture from the 17th through the 19th centuries. Still free and open to the public today, their mission is to foster scholarship, increase public understanding, and preserve American history before 1900. The Library Company connects with thousands of visitors annually, ensuring that the lessons of the past will continue to amaze, instruct, and inspire future generations. I find it interesting that when I use the online search tool on their website, I can find 18,570 hits for the keyword "America," but nearly zero for LGBTQ, transgender, handicapped, social-emotional learning, mental health, all the things that divide us these days. And on the contrary, when I search in our local online library catalogs, including KDL and Follett Destiny through our K I S D school districts, I can find thousands of books that populate using those same keywords, so it's kind of interesting, and I wonder why that is. Do we think that these ideologies truly play a part in the founding of America, and do they truly speak for what America really is at its core? Do you really think that our founding fathers envisioned finding ways to divide America or to unite us? One thing I appreciated Holly bringing up tonight with the new book system that's coming into play, is that she was worried about who would be the one to decide the content filtering. And something I wanted to bring to your attention, interestingly, is that I was having a conversation with the Forest Hills librarian this past week. a conversation with the Forest Hills librarian this past week online, and she brought up the fact that if you search, it happened to be Benjamin Franklin in the KDL library, that 99 results pop up. And that's great, 99 books through the KDL on Benjamin Franklin and the founding of America. That's great. The problem is, when you actually go into those search results, you find that you get to page seven, eight, nine, and you don't find books about Benjamin Franklin. You find books about Franklin and Friends, The Turtle, or books that were written with an author with the first name Benjamin or the last name Franklin. But this is the problem with our system. It's broken, and it needs to be fixed, and I've been trying to call attention to that. We cannot just make a blanket fix for our problem. Let us help you.
Thank you. Next up is Nancy Bamstra.
Nancy Bamstra, 2779 Thorn Apple River Drive. Though I do have two children in the Forest Hills School District, I come to you today not just as a parent, but as a pediatric psychologist who cares deeply about children's mental health and their physical well-being. Specifically, I'm here today to ask the school board to consider a resolution that would allow information to be sent to families about secure gun storage. It's a heartbreaking fact that in the U.S., firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens. More than 1,800 children under the age of 18 are killed with guns every year. That's average of five children a day. The majority of these deaths, 1,000 or so, are homicides. Additionally, nearly 700 children die by firearm suicide, and another 100 children are unintentionally shot and killed. One of the reasons for these sobering statistics is that 5 million children are currently living in homes with loaded and unlocked guns. Over and over again, we see the tragic result of gun violence, lives cut short and lost senselessly, lifelong trauma, survivor's guilt. As parents, it's impossible to hear about these horrible events and not think about our own children. Last week during drop-off, my son and I heard what I can only assume was a car backfiring. I immediately wondered whether it was the sound of gunfire. So did my 11-year-old son. I immediately wondered what I could do to take that information and get it to parents. I asked myself, how could we keep our kids safe? How can we prevent these types of tragedies at Forest Hills? Following the shooting at MSU, FHPS sent a letter outlining the district's efforts to promote our children's safety, including ensuring adequate technical safeguards in the infrastructure, so things like emergency preparations, and focusing on human connection about, and mental health. What I'm asking for today is an opportunity for families to learn how they can partner with the school district in these important efforts. We know that access to an unlocked firearm can be deadly. In up to 80% of incidents, underage shooters obtain their guns from their own home or the house of a relative or a friend. We can and should make families know how to store guns securely in their homes. This messaging is further supported by the law that was just made requiring secure gun storage in the state of Michigan. Today, I'm asking you to pass a resolution that would allow FHPS to send information home to parents about the importance of secure gun storage. Several school districts on the east side of the state have passed similar resolutions and have begun distributing this information. Birmingham School District sent home secure gun storage information in their start-of-school packets. When it comes to important issues, I see FHPS as a leader in West Michigan, and I think this is a great opportunity to demonstrate that leadership once again and be the first in our region to take such a step. Materials and other resources are readily available through Be Smart, an organization dedicated to promoting responsible gun ownership in order to reduce the deaths, injuries, and trauma that can result when a child or teen is able to access a gun. I ask that these information giving and potentially lifesaving materials be sent to our FHPS community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Vanderjaff?
I'm going to pass.
Okay, thank you. Vincent Monhar?
Vincent Monhar. This presentation is rated PG. On 3/20/23, minute 50 of the board meeting, Kristin Fawcett made a speech on behalf of the board. Quotes include, "Public schools across the nation have been subject to political attacks. Forest Hill Public Schools has not been immune to these attacks. Every month at board meetings, members of the public rail against books they don't believe should be in our school libraries. Excerpts are read in an attempt to incite outrage and claim that this is what the district is teaching. The Board of Education is comfortable with the procedures that Superintendent Beam's staff is working on and are hopeful they will allay concerns of both parents who would like greater control over what their students read, as well as parents who wish for their children to access robust catalog of diverse reading materials." The most disturbing part of this speech was the overreach of power that Kristin Fawcett appears to make with her speech. Number one, she never uses the singular pronoun "I" and rather uses the proper noun "Board of Education" and plural pronouns "are" and "we." This denotes she's speaking on behalf of the board. Number two, almost immediately after the speech, other board members are recorded pushing back on her narrative, clarifying that her words do not speak for all members. Number three, her words show political bias, casting concern parents and citizens as, quote, "political attackers," and projecting emotions that excerpts are read in an attempt to incite outrage. I am a book reader. I am not an attacker. Attackers do not assign movie ratings to their own speeches, ask innocents to leave, and minimize disruptions by offering to go last. I consistently do all of those things. Your system put pornographic books of all persuasions in the public schools. Not me. You have a system that's so obtuse that parents will struggle to opt out of Asian-appropriate books. Not me. I serve to make your actions transparent to the public by directly reading what is available in your libraries. Labeling a messenger as an attacker is disingenuous. If you tolerate the children reading Asian-appropriate books, then it is hypocritical to be intolerant of my reading to you here." Kristin Fawcett is in violation of several board policies with this speech. 2101B1, Rules of Board Members. Individual board members do not speak on the board's behalf without board approval. Public communications by individual board members about district matters must clearly indicate that the board member is not speaking on the board's behalf. 2302B, Code of Ethics. A board member will not, Section 1, represent the board member's personal opinions as those of the board. Section 2, act in isolation, operating as a board of one. Section 4, use the board's position for actual or perceived personal or political gain. I call upon the remaining board members to invoke Policy 2303, Violation of Board Code of Ethics, and investigate Kristin Fawcett's egregious behavior. As that policy opens, the board is responsible for enforcing the Code of Ethics for its members. Because as the recent indictment of Donald Trump has taught us, no one is above the law. Good day.
Thank you. Doug Lee?
I'm Doug Lee, and I live at 52nd Street. I have four Forest Hills alumni, and I speak for them, being a father, and results of some of the things I speak about. I also speak for my upcoming grandkid that will be coming in the district to protect them as well. Imagine a time when the Lord's Prayer was spoken in first hour in public schools. Divorce rate was almost nonexistent, and the family unit was strong. That was only 60 years ago. So how do we get from there to now? Divorce rate over 50%, pornographic and obscene materials are commonplace in our school library, and many in this board defend that in the name of diversity. In 60 years, our nation has managed to destroy the family unit. We have all played a part in that destruction. You're creating an environment for evil to prey upon young boys and girls with sexual dysphoria, confusion. You're asking, you're saying it's okay for a girl wanting to be a boy and vice versa. Adolescence is a confusing enough time for our youth and adding gender to the mix, creating more confusion. Many here don't even know you're a participant in Satan's evil plan. America has turned away from God and seen firsthand its results. We've been trying to open eyes of many in the last three years, and we're, and we're not going anywhere. You welcomed the ideology of CRT through SCL-focused curriculum programs. You created the first-ever Diversity Equity Inclusion Department, and through this, you have successfully created community divide. If this was your goal, or you're simply allowing this to happen, to get along and not rock the boat. I pray that your eyes will be open and that you make bold decisions to protect the children. God will give you the strength you will need to make right decisions. We are a country built on the foundation of Christianity, and it's time to put God at its center. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Ruprecht?
Hi, I'm Dawn Ruprecht, 2526 Buttrick, and I am going to address some of the stuff that was said already tonight. At the March meeting, after Dr. Fawcett spoke, the admin of the Just for Education Group demanded evidence of attacks and weaponization. Well, I'm happy to help. First, I want to remind, I'm going to tag onto the board thing and say, our Code of Ethics also mandates that all board members avoid an actual or perceived conflict of interest and that they be mindful of obligations to the district, including placing the district's best interests above their own personal interests. You work for the students, not for the Just campaign. Attack number one, let's just start this. I alluded to it last week, a current student who at the time was a middle school, excuse me, middle school student, was attacked online by an admin, by Stephanie Boone, public figure, and told he was playing dumb. We already talked about that. After the last meeting, she doubled down on that, released, not his name, but talked about him as well as another student who chose to speak, who were guilty of sitting next to an openly gay man who they'd never met. But what did Stephanie put on both the Forest Hills site and the Lowell site, including releasing this man's name, was that he was grooming these boys. He was their guardian. He had brought them here. Their parents were here and had encouraged them to speak. Justin just sat next to them. That was an attack, not a heartfelt concern, Holly. We can go on to our trans attacks. This is Stephanie, who said, and with regards to the recall, that she said it was about transportation and transparency, but the two reasons it was really done was because of the pornography in our schools, there is no pornography in the schools, and trans kids terrorizing our bathrooms. That is a lie. That is an attack on students in this school and their families. We can go on. There are hundreds of these, you guys. Doug Lee had a photo of a student on his campaign page that he refused to take down when asked by the parents, thought parents were supposed to be dictators here. And he and Tom Namsik, their treasurer, said it was because she was affiliated with an opposing group. That photo was never taken down. We can talk about Scott Teigen requesting a meeting with Dan and showing up with Nick and taping him. Illegal? No. Totally shady and disingenuous? Absolutely. We could keep going, but I want to spend the last, I'm out of time. 7.1% of these students are gay, not a fraction of 1%. That's, that's 700 kids in this district and their families and their friends. I'll keep, I'll continue next month.
Thank you. All right, at this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all who requested follow up. Superintendent Beam, do you have any closing remarks?
Thanks for the comments tonight. Just simply go back to where we began our meeting, with our students and our students that link everyone together. And I think our students always set an example for us that we can follow. And what we hear is to spread kindness. And Dr. Fawcett, I think you mentioned that, that you saw in one of these pieces, spread kindness like confetti. And I think, for me, those are apt, closing comments tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
May we adjourn?
My second. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.